Of the GSL school board to order for July 8th, 2019. And I'd like to have a stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Alicia, will you take roll call, please?
Jamie, absent. Kevin?
Here.
John?
Here.
Jason?
Here.
Myself here, and Donna.
Thank you, Alicia. Announcements, the next school board meeting, the next regular school board meeting will be on Monday, August 12th, 2019 at 7:00 PM in the GSL High School Community Room, 443 444. Any acknowledgements this evening?
I would just like to, and I'll probably do this again in August, but I would like to acknowledge our custodial staff. They are just working their tails off this summer and making lots of progress on all the different buildings and getting all the cleaning done. The month of June has been a very fast month, and they have got a lot done, obviously lots to do yet, but I do think it's appropriate to recognize them at this time. So, thank you guys for the job that you are doing.
Any other acknowledgements? Hearing none, we'll move on to public input relating to the agenda. First call for public input relating to the agenda. Second call. And third call for public input relating to agenda. Hearing none, reports and presentations, there are no reports at this time from the Next, we'll move on to administration and committee reports. Business Manager, Sandra?
Just a quick update on the parking lot, otherwise my other items are part of the agenda, so I'll just wait on those. We had a construction meeting last Tuesday, and doesn't seem like a lot is happening, but they're still guaranteeing that they're going to be done on schedule the end of July, so we'll see how that plays out. Tomorrow is the scheduled start on the curbing, curbing and gutter, so we'll see if they all show up to start working on that. We have another meeting tomorrow afternoon at 1:30, so I'm sure we'll get an update on that. But at this point, they have no reason to believe they're not going to have things done for us and ready to go by August, so that's good, even though we get kind of impatient waiting for things to happen. But it sounds like they're not worried, so we're excited about having that project finished.
So, they have an actual like August 1st, that's what they're shooting for?
Yeah, yep.
Okay. All right, thanks, Michelle. Principal reports, there are no reports at this time. Bill, you have nothing? Superintendent's report.
Thank you, and good evening. I just want to go through a couple of things that we're working on. One of the things that I'll be working on here in the next couple of days is that we're going to go through another Wings Closet Drive, try to see if we can get some more materials and more things for the Wings Closet. The balancing act with that is to make sure that we get, you know, stuff, but at the same time, I don't need too many, too many things, right? So, we'll be reaching that out. We're also going to be looking at some different ways to help with our lunch account balance. One of the things that we do is work very closely with families to try to keep their lunch balance up to date, and at the same time, make sure that kids get the meals that they get to eat, right? And so, but when the dust settles, the school district actually loses some dollars with that, and so we're looking at some ways to account for that, and we'll be working on that a little bit here this week and the next week. I'm also going to be asking for a book drive to help replace some of our books on the bus program. We do have those bins that are out in front of our doors that have been used and getting a little bit depleted, so that's a really good thing. Later on in the month, I'll be meeting with Stephen Seminary and be working with them on to different programs that we have, you know, through our initiative fund, through our College and the Schools Program, those types of things. Every summer, I meet with that group to discuss little things that we can do to improve our school, and they're very supportive of the things that we're doing. We're getting close to having all of our hiring completed, only just a few things or a few positions that are up and running. I also want to report that the fall activity signup is up and ready to go, so if any families have kids that are planning on going out for fall activities, they can go to the website and they can register, you know, right now and get that stuff ready to go. The meetings are going to be a little bit different this year than having it all in one meeting and all having that take place in one night. The majority of them are still going to take place on that last Monday in July, but there's a few activities that will have their own individual meetings, and so it's working a little bit differently, especially with the way that you can register for these activities. I think it's working out really well, and it's really convenient for families. As I mentioned before, thank you to the custodial staff and keep up the great work. I also want to send a thank you out to the city of Silver Lake. We worked with them on changing the ordinance for the street in front of Lakeside, and now they do have a two-hour parking max for when the school year is in session, and so really thankful for them to work with us on that, and it's just going to help keep the traffic in that area down a little bit. As we have reported last week, our food program is still up and running. You know, you went through the lunchroom today here at lunch, and it was full of kids getting lunch, so that was a really good thing. Negotiations update, we do have a closed session tonight that we'll talk a little bit. There is no scheduled meetings at this time for the teachers and for the local 284. Once we have our closed session talking a little bit, our job is to then reach out to those two unions and schedule those meetings, and we'll make sure, you know, John, we'll make sure that you know, and we'll make sure that that is announced on when those next meetings will be taking place, and hopefully we'll continue to move along in that process. Workshop days are pretty well set, and I think I got the schedule all pretty well locked down here for today in terms of some of the things. August 27th, 28th, and 29th, I know people aren't ready to hear that just yet, but we are ready to go for August in our workshop. One of the things that we're working on is going to be some training with adverse childhood experiences, and this is something that McLeod County Public Health is putting together, so it's nice to partner with them to do that. Silver Lake Parade is coming up, they're still looking for participations, you can see me, and then we're also having that partnership with Tri Valley Head Start, and that's going well. They're utilizing our facility until their facility is getting done, and they're, like I said, the partnership and us being able to help out has gone really, really well this summer, so lots going on, it's a busy summer, and I'm sure the month of July is going to be no exception.
Thank you Superintendent Sanju. Any committee reports right now?
John and I are on the Personnel Committee, and I just wanted to read a brief statement that we wanted to share here. The first... The Personnel Committee Director Vonberg and Directors Lemke, with the help of the District Office Staff, were unable to locate the superintendent evaluation procedure from the previous committee. Director Lemke contacted the Minnesota State School Board Association, and they were able to give him an outline for us to follow. They also sent us a manual for goals and standards of superintendent evaluations. Due to the limited information of the evaluation process, we are asking to table the evaluation until the August board meeting. We feel this is the best way to handle this for everyone involved. Thank you for your patience and understanding, Directors Vonberg and Lemke. So, that's just what, we just, we couldn't find any evaluations from years past, we couldn't find any information as to how it is done, so he reached out to MSSB, and that's what they sent us, and with not having enough time to go through all of them, we did give each school board member, or John did, at the last meeting, some examples of some evaluations, and we've narrowed it down to Evaluation Form 3, and John handed them out tonight, so if you guys can just get them filled out and brought to us as soon as possible, then we can go from there.
Thank you, Donna, that would be item F, was for the evaluation, we'll just skip that when we get there, so, thank you. All right, moving on, any other committee reports? Okay, hearing none, approve agenda, action item. Do I have a motion?
No.
Have a motion by Alicia? Have a second?
Second.
A second by John to approve the agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Agenda approved. Approve the Consent Agenda, action item enclosure one. Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda? I'll make that motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion by Jason and a second by John to approve the Consent Agenda. Any questions or discussion?
I'd just like to point out that some of these are the teachers that we previously laid off here a month or so ago, two months ago, whenever that was, and we talked about how that process is just, you know, part of the variance process and things like that, and so now they're back on, just like we said they were going to be.
Thank you, Chris. Any other questions or additions? If not, I have a motion by Jason, a second by John to approve the Consent Agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Item passes. On old business, school start and end times, this is an action item. GSL is requesting the following start and end times for the GSL School District. GSL High School and Junior High, 8:12 to 3:20. Lincoln Elementary, 8:15 to 3:10. Lakeside Elementary, 8:10 to 3 o'clock. ECFE would remain the same time, 8:30 to 11:00 and 12:00 to 2:30. At this time, I think before we make a motion on this item, I think we'll have some discussion and some questions that may be answered or not answered.
Well, I'll start by just saying thank you for allowing this item to be back on the agenda, to have that discussion. If we, if you need to have any more questions and answers, we'll be happy to provide those. Hopefully, you got some of the information from last month. One of the things that I want to point out, and I want to be very respectful to the, all the board members, you know, for those of you that voted no, if the vote continues and have that same way, I would be respectfully asked that this does not pass. I don't want to pass it without having all of our board members here. Does that make sense? Obviously, if it went the same way, it would pass three to two, because we're missing somebody, but I want to be respectful to Jamie and, you know, to make sure that if it doesn't happen to go, I would like to respect that and to continue to just move forward with what we have and go from there. But hopefully, we were able to give you the information that you need. This is something that I think will be really good for our school district. We worked really hard to make sure that the change wasn't going to be a huge effect for parents, and at the same time, it's going to give our staff some of the necessary time that they've been requesting. So, with that said, I will let you guys have any other questions, unless you want to just move forward with this and see where it goes.
I guess at last month's meeting, John asked a question if all the questions and concerns that were from the Lincoln Elementary leadership team, if they were answered, were they shared with the leadership team, were they written, documented? And if not, if they haven't been, if that hasn't been done, then what is going to happen is I'm afraid we'll drive a wedge there. I don't think we need to do that. I think, I don't think the Lincoln Elementary leadership team was against the time change, they just had questions and concerns that they wanted answered, and I don't know if they got all those. And at one point, the only, the only leadership team that said anything was the Lincoln Elementary. We had, we had nothing from the junior high, senior high until after last month's vote. We had nothing from any of the other administrators, whether it was opposition or support, we didn't have anything until after last month's vote. And so, again, I don't think that the Lakeside Elementary leadership team was against the change, they just wanted some answers, and I'm hoping that all those questions and all those concerns were taken care of. They're not questions that I have, I don't think any of the questions are what questions that board members have, it's the leadership team, because they're going to be dealing with the change, so that's all, that's all I wanted to say about it.
As I would just, Bill, do you have any, have you heard anything from them? I don't want to put you on the spot, but is there anything that you've heard of, or anything negative?
You know, I would agree with Mr. Keister, it's accurate that the teacher representatives were certainly not against the time change. In fact, saw many of the advantages which are outlined on that sheet. Have I had additional feedback?
I know that from the AD, we did have a letter from Dean that he reached out to the Wright County Conference, and, you know, we talked about moving some of the scheduling back 10 more minutes, so kids won't have to miss any more school. They didn't have an issue with that, they thought, you know, we could easily do that, so that was a nice, glad he reached out to them. We did get some letters from junior high and senior high leadership teams that are, I guess, very hopeful of the change and saw some good benefits to it, so I guess that's all I know at this time. Nothing negative from parents that I've heard from any other of the teams, so...
You know, I know that there was also, you know, the supervision questions, and I know our administrative staff will be working on that. The goal is to absolutely have a cost neutral with the supervision of that, because there might be a little bit of extra time in the morning where supervision will happen. I would also say to you that if there is a cost, Michelle and I have already talked a little bit about being able to use some of our Safe Schools dollars, which is designated for those types of things, to use, so it's not going to be, you know, an extra cost out of the general fund. You know, the other concern, you know, from, even from the elementary, they talked about the extracurriculars, which I think was addressed. They also talked a little bit about how, you know, their day will be very shorter, much shorter at the end, and, you know, what about IEP meetings, what about some of those other meetings that are going to be after school? And one of the things that we're trying to do is, we're trying to be able to create some flexible scheduling with our staff, which will allow that type of thing to do. And in the end, I really believe, at least I hope, I'm really optimistic, that this change will allow us to save some dollars because of the flexibility that we're going to give our staff. I hope that they'll be able to utilize that flexibility to save us compensation time, and compensation time equals dollars. And if we're going to be able to allow some of that flexibility with our staff, I think that in the end, it's going to be a win-win for everybody. And like I said before, the families, which we obviously need to be very conscious of, one of the things that we're trying to do is to say, hey, your time, from your standpoint at home, is going to be affected by about 10 minutes, and we hope that that's going to be very similar on a day that's slow, with snow or rain, or, you know, those types of things with our buses. When the kids get to school, we're going to try to be able to have some programs, there's going to be some flexibility options with different activities, there might be some community education activities. I provided you guys with that document that showed you the pluses and the minuses, and hopefully that answered the questions that you have. I just think that this is something that, it's kind of a small change in terms of time, but it really could be a big benefit to the school district, which is why we're asking for it again, and hopefully you guys, as a board, have the information that you need to make the decision that you need to make, so...
This is just Minnesota, and I just want my Safe School Dollars you just mentioned, those monies are not already allocated anywhere else. I had a question from somebody, I just, those monies are there for us to use at our discretion, I'm assuming?
Right.
But we're not taking those monies, I mean, if there'd be monies that we want to be taking?
The example that I'd give you is, you know, in the past, over the last few years, we used it to help pay for our officers at football games or extracurricular activities, we would buy our cameras out of that, so maybe we'd buy a couple less cameras, you know, type of thing, but I think that utilizing these dollars this way might be better than the things that we have been utilizing in the past. Unfortunately, with Safe School monies, there's not this huge hunk of money to really do lots with it, right? It's not, not a huge hunk of money, and so these are things that you would look at, what could you use Safe School Dollars for? This would be an example that would be, would be perfect for spending those dollars on.
We've had a balance in the Safe Schools, and it's a very hard one, we've been doing a lot of balance the last couple of weeks.
I'm sorry, if I don't write it down, I guarantee you by Friday, I'll walk out.
Any more comments or discussion?
I make a motion to go ahead and approve the start, school start times and ends.
Okay. I have a motion to, do I have a second? I have a motion by John and a second by Alicia to approve the above start and end times for the GSL School District. Any more discussion?
If I may, I'll jump in here. The reason why I want to thank the people who met with me, who took the time out of their summer schedules to meet with me, I have a lot more information now than I had to begin. And for me, information is how I can make an educated decision, and I want to thank the people who took the time out of their schedules to educate me. Like Kevin mentioned, at that point when we voted, I just had one document, and that was all I had information on, so, since then, I have been, like Jason says, we've had something from Mr. Schwartz and also from other various leadership groups, and I appreciate that, so...
All right, I have a motion by John, a second by Alicia. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All against, signify by saying no.
No.
Motion passes four to one. New business. Approval of 403B reinstatement plan. The district needs to update the current 403B document for the Non-Employed Retirement Income Security Act. 403B Plan's adoption agreement number 04002 of the Employee Retirement Income Security Act. The district contracts with EBC, Employee Benefit Consultants, which is a third-party administrator that monitors all the district's 403B plans along with the IRS 125 plans. The reinstatement plan ensures that the district is in compliance with all the IRS regulations and changes that have taken place. The last time the plan was adopted was 2009. Do I have a motion? I'll make a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Donna. Any information on this, is this something?
This is just kind of standard, as you read, we haven't looked at this plan since 2009, and since that time, a number of IRS regulations have changed, that it's time that we just need to update that plan. Like you read, we work with a company called EBC as our third-party administrator. It's gotten to the point these days, if you don't have somebody else that's knowledgeable, very knowledgeable in the IRS and your 403Bs and your Section 125 plans, it's really hard to regulate to make sure that we're following the correct laws and being in compliance with all the tax regulations, so it's just an update to that plan. We have a full copy of the plan in our office if anybody's interested in reading it, but it's not real exciting reading, so that's kind of the basis for the reinstatement plan.
Okay. Thanks, Michelle. Any more questions? If not, I have a motion by Jason and a second by Donna to approve the 403B Retirement Plan Adoption Agreement number 04002. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item B, approve long-term facilities maintenance plan, action item enclosure number two. A 10-year long-term facilities maintenance plan must be approved by the board before the August levy data completion. The long-term facilities maintenance plan needs to be approved yearly and submitted to MDE for approval before it can be included with the preliminary levy. The plan has been reviewed by the Facilities Committee, Directors Olsleben and Lindeman, and Superintendent Sanju and Business Manager Sander, and they are recommending approval of the plan. A roll call vote will be taken.
So, just some basic information on the LTFM plan. I think this is the third, fourth year that we've had LTFM money, the Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Plan money. Prior to that, it was our health and safety money and our deferred maintenance money that we had dollars to use. A few years ago, the legislators changed all that, they combined the health and safety, which is now part of LTFM, and the deferred maintenance, and then they increased the revenue that we get for it, both in levy and state aid. In the past, the health and safety and the deferred maintenance was all levy, and now we have that aid component that goes with it. So, the requirement to get those dollars approved as part of the levy process, we have to review our project list, we have to put that together on a 10-year plan, which is really hard to do, because we don't know from now, three years from now, what's going to be moved up on our priority list to know what we want to do, but it's a general outline of our plan, and we know, working on our Facilities Committee, that we have a plan starting next year, and for the next however many years it takes, we need to start on remodeling bathrooms. We need to replace classroom ceilings and lights that haven't been taken care of. So, we have a number of things on that list. Brady, Chris, myself, every time we notice something, something comes up, we're like, put it on the list, put it on the list, and then what we do every spring or sooner is kind of relook at that list, prioritize what needs to be done. So, for example, now this summer, as the custodians have been cleaning, Brady came and said, yeah, we better move the one, the floor in the fax room up a little bit on our priority list, because a lot of the tile are cracking. So, that's something we'll look again next spring. So, we put all this together in the plan, we kind of outline how much it's going to cost for plumbing, electrical, interior, all those different types of things. You want to make sure, you know, five years, 10 years down the road, that you've got some money set aside if you need it for roof repair, those type of things. So, this is basically just taking our list and putting it into the LTFM plan, and then it's the revenue that we get, which is formula-based, we get what we get, and put it together and have you approve it and submit it all to the Department of Education. Any questions or specific questions you'd have as far as what's on our, on our list? We've kind of, the list has been on hold a little bit because of paying down, using some of that to pay on our building debt, and some of the projects associated, not just with the debt, but some of the things that we did in conjunction with, with the building project. So, we do as much as we can with the dollars that we get. Estimated dollars for this next year are a little over $600,000 that we'll bring in, so that money goes a long way in taking care of a lot of things that still need to get done.
I had to borrow my dad's cheaters, and I have three that I said to read.
To read it, yeah, it's small print.
Chris got a bigger paper.
I can print you bigger copies, I have bigger copies.
Any more questions? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion for this item. I have a motion by John, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Alicia. Alicia, will you please take roll call vote?
Yes. Jason?
Four.
Kevin?
Four.
John?
Four.
I'm thinking this next one is supposed to be say Jamie?
Yep.
Who's out. Me, four, and Donna.
Thank you, Alicia. Motion passes. Item C, award the fuel bids, this is an action item. One sealed bid was received on July 2nd from the Glencoe Co-op Association of a Discount of .6 cents at the pump price for a gallon, for a gallon of diesel or for gas. Is the recommendation of Superintendent Sanju and Business Manager Sander to accept bid for gas and diesel from Glencoe Co-op Association from July 1, 2019, through July 30, 2020. Do I have a motion? I'll make that motion. Have a second?
Second.
One bid was received, I would imagine.
Yep, just the one bid that came in. We have a bid deadline and that was the only bid that showed up. We didn't even have any late bids this year, so that was kind of nice. The co-op has been great to work with. The bus drivers love it, custodians love it. It's easy to get in, easy to get out, so it's real convenient for them. Billings are always correct and, you know, easy to sort through. So that takes a while because there's a lot of fuel slips that come in with all our buses, so.
Do we use card troll cards, or is it separate?
Yeah, each of the vehicles have their own card.
Their own card specifically for that one.
Which bus or van is using which card.
Okay, okay. All right, I have a motion by Jason, second by Donna to approve the bid for gas and diesel from Glencoe Co-op Association. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Designation of Official Newspaper, Action Item, enclosure three. Encloses a bid from McCloud Publishing Incorporated for the McCloud County Chronicle to serve as the school district's official newspaper from July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. McCloud Publishing's quote is $5.75 per column inch for legal business, $7.75 per column inch for non-legal camera-ready business, and $9 for non-legal, non-camera-ready. McCloud Publishing is currently providing legal newspaper service for the school district. The quote last year was a rate of $5.75 per column inch for legal business, $6.75 for non-legal camera-ready business, and $8.65 for non-legal, non-camera-ready business. Do I have a motion? I have a motion by John, do I have a second? I have a second by Alicia. To accept the bid from McCloud Publishing Incorporated, the McCloud County Chronicle, through June 30, 2020. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Approved, same sign. Motion carries. Item E, Reduction of a .5 Paraprofessional at the High School. Action item. Superintendent Sanji recommends reduction of a .5 FTE paraprofessional at the high school for 2019-2020 school year. I'll entertain a motion for this item at this time. I have a motion by Alicia. I'll second that. Superintendent Sanji, you got any information on this?
This is the .5, we just approved the hiring of, you know, the .5 special education teacher was Carol Silas. And then she had a .5 para position. And now, because of that hiring, we feel that this is an area that we can go ahead and become more efficient in. And so we're going to reduce this area because we think we can get it covered with the paraprofessionals that we have.
Thank you, Chris. I have a motion by Alicia and a second by Jason to approve the .5 FTE reduction of paraprofessional position. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item F was the formal evaluation of superintendent in July. We will, yep, we'll table that to August. Item G, Approval of Principals' Contracts, this is an action item. Superintendent Sanji and School Board Negotiators Directors Lemke and Lindemann recommend approving the principal's contract. I can give you some information on that first. It is a total package for 2019-2020 of $560,584.39. And for 2020-2021 of $573,325.59. So a total dollar increase of $28,210.71 over the two years. That's over the two years, right, Michelle? And the percentage increase is 5.11% for the two years. For two years, two-year contract, over two years, yep. Any questions before I entertain a motion? 5.11. Any questions by any of the board members on that? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve. I have a motion by John. I will second that motion. To approve the 2019 through 2021 principals' contracts. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Just wanted to thank the principals. John and I met with them and it was a very nice meeting, very professional discussion. And I believe we came to a very fair contract for the district and for the principals. So thank you guys very much, so. Item H, Community Education Pay Rates for 2019-2020, Action Item, enclosure number four. Community Education Panther Fieldhouse Director shall request approval of the pay rates for community education staff for 2019-2020 school year. Superintendent Sanji recommends approval of the pay rates. Do I have a motion? I have a motion by Alicia. I have a second. I have a second by John. To approve the pay rates for community education staff as listed for the 2019-2020 school year. I believe everybody got a chance to look at those. Does anyone have any questions on that?
And just for your reminder, we try to stay even with the city with a lot of our positions, you know, with our lifeguards, that type of stuff, so.
All right, hearing none. I have a motion by Alicia, a second by John to approve the pay rates for community education staff as listed for 2019-2020 school year. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Item I, First Reading of Policies. Action item, is the recommendation of the Policy Committee to bring back the following policies for adoption at the next school board meeting. 425, Staff Development. Item 503, Student Attendance. 519, Interviews of Student by Outside Agencies. 527, Student Use and Parking of Motor Vehicles, Patrols, Inspections and Searches. 528, Student Parental Family and Marital Status Nondiscrimination. 541, Data Request Policy for Subjects of Data. 603, Curriculum Development. Item 606, Textbooks and Instructional Materials. 616, School District System Accountability. 619, Staff Development for Standards. 730, Post-Inurance Debt Compliance. Issuance Debt Compliance. And 807, Health and Safety Policy. Do I have a motion? Motion by John, do I have a second? I have a second by Donna. To bring back the policies listed above for adoption at the next school board meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item J, Second Reading of Policies, Action Item. The following policies received their first reading at the June 2 school board meeting is the recommendation of the Policy Committee Directors Lemke and Luckhart and the Superintendent of Schools to adopt these policies. Jamie graciously read those last meeting. I will not, I will just entertain a motion to approve these. I will make that motion. Do I have a second? I have a second, a motion by Jason and a second by Alicia to adopt the policies listed above. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item K, Resolution to Accept Donations. Action item, is the recommendation of Superintendent Sanji to adopt the resolution to accept donations. Do I have a motion? A motion by Donna. Do I have a second? I have a second by Alicia. To accept donations. Okay, I have a motion by Donna and a second by Alicia to accept donations. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Again, I'll just say, wonderful group of donations, diverse, all over the community and a lot of different things they're donating for, so thank you, thank you, thank you. Item L, Referendum Election Discussion. I think Chris and Michelle, you were going to have some information.
Yeah, obviously, we have a very important vote that's going to be coming up here in November. And there's some logistics that need to be taken care of before you get going. And this is just kind of our start to kind of get the ball rolling on all this. We're in good shape on the timelines. However, I think we need to set up a workshop where we can bring out Aylers to talk a little bit similar to how we did that last time. And they talk a little bit about, you know, the tax impact and being able to set that dollar amount. We're looking at July 22 at 7 o'clock, 6 o'clock, wasn't that?
The 22nd or the 29th.
Those two worked for.
For Aylers.
For Aylers. And so just wanted to take a look at your schedule to see what would work for you with any of those two dates. And if those two dates don't work, we're going to have to go back and ask the question. But hopefully, we can see if we can make that work.
We just reached out to Aylers kind of ahead of time to get a couple dates that would work for them. The deadline that we have to follow to have the resolution calling for the election is August 23. So we're hoping to have that done by our August board meeting. We've been in contact with the county. They're going to be setting up some training for both Tricia and Donna from our office because this is now considered just a school election. There's no state or county questions that's going to be on the ballot. There's a possibility there might be a city question that will go on a ballot. And then if that's the case, then we'd end up sharing some cost with the city. We've got the city center reserved for November 5 is the day of the election. If you remember back in December, we've already, as a school board, you made the resolution approving one polling place. That has to be done by December of every year. So there will be one polling place only, and that decision has already been made. So that kind of simplify those things. So the big thing is to come up with is that ballot question and what that dollar amount wants to be. So that's why we thought it would be beneficial to have a work session to decide what that dollar amount is that we want for a referendum renewal.
I'll just throw out there that I know I can't be here on the 29th.
Monday nights.
Six or seven, whatever.
They're both Monday nights. And Monday nights, I usually work till at least 7:30, 8 o'clock. So I work from 1:30 till either 7:30 or 8 o'clock. Oh, I don't know. It all depends on what time you want to meet, I guess, but.
It's up to you guys. I'm sure we could push it back a little bit later.
There was no other days they could meet with us?
We just started with a couple of them.
We just, yeah, we threw out a couple Mondays because that's typically when, you know, the board has set up meetings.
If there's a different date.
I'm sure is.
Do we want to try to do a morning meeting? Because we could certainly do that as well. But we just need to go back and connect with them so that they can put it on their calendar. I think they're pretty flexible and they'll be able to help us. But like I said, we just started with those dates and thought we'd come back with somewhere to start. But if those don't seem to work, then we'll have to go back to the drawing board.
Either one of those days in the morning would be fine with me, so that's up to everybody else.
I'll make it work. I can make it work. I'll just go in to work late.
What time in the morning are you thinking?
No, Aylers, how far are they coming from, I mean, they offer.
Depends on who they send, you know. For sure, somebody from Roseville, that area is where their office is. They've got some of their.
They just have to get up earlier?
People work all over the place, so.
If we would do morning, what does that?
I can give anybody a wake-up call at 4:30 or 5:00.
Does it have to be after 7:00 then, or?
Should we try July 22 at 8 o'clock?
In the morning or night?
Morning.
Morning, sure.
Yep.
Yeah, that would work.
And that gives people enough time to look at their schedules. And we'll try to go for about an hour. And it'll, you know, very similar to what it was last year. We had those three goals, that we wanted to keep our fund balanced, we wanted to make sure that we had our programs. And we also wanted to maximize that state aid. Those were some of the balancing acts that we had when we came up with our amount the last time. You know, it was a fairly minor increase. And we're looking at that because of that minor increase to maximize that state aid. I think it was a wise decision by this board. Unfortunately, it didn't pass. You also unfortunately had to put that language on the ballot, which was certainly something that people don't like to read. It wasn't just a renewal. But it did make financial sense to do that. And I think that it's wise for us to do that again.
So we're meeting with Aylers to do what then, exactly?
To come up with our ballot language and talk about what we're going to be putting on.
So the ballot language is going to be different than it was before?
I don't think so, but depending on, it might be, you know, when they run numbers, it could be instead of this dollar amount, it could be a couple of dollars different depending on when they go through all those little details of calculations. You can't just say, hey, do the exact same thing. I think they need to do some financial work. Does that make sense?
Is there any specific scenarios you want Aylers to run to work on? So far, I've got them working. They've ran preliminary numbers renewing for what's expiring, which is the $176.88 is the dollar amount that expires. And then the second scenario is looking at maximizing that state aid. That's the two that we kind of focused on the last time. Anything else that you would like them to run before they come?
Could you excuse me because I need to, but the purpose of this workshop would be to have those discussions at the workshop?
But what helps is. Yeah, yep.
Correct, as opposed to doing it in August.
What helps Aylers, if you've got a dollar mountain in mind that you'd like them to run, then when they come to the work session, they can have those tax impacts ready for you to take a look at. So if they're, give it some thought. If there's something that you want me to tell them to run, just shoot me an email or give me a call and we can talk through that because Aylers will run pretty much whatever we tell them to run. If you want higher than that, maximizing the state aid, then more comes back as levy. If you want somewhere in between, we can do anything.
What was the dollar figure for maximizing state aid? It was like 201?
283.
283, 12.
Yeah, I got Chris's cheat sheet here in my folder, Chris, so I haven't lost it yet.
Well, and just how it all works out, you know, it, in the reality of it, we're asking for a renewal with a small increase. And that small increase talks about how the, for us to be able to maximize that state aid. And things have changed a little bit with how that, the dollars go with, you know, with the 424 and then the 300 and those types of things that we have taken advantage of. And our job is to make sure that we're going out to educate our public. I think we did that very well. Unfortunately, it was a very high voter turnout. And when people see that the fact that they're going to have a tax increase, they don't like that, even though this was a small tax increase when we went through it. And it was something that I think was really financially smart to do, to take advantage of that state aid. And if you remember from our workshop session when Aylers were there, that's exactly what they recommended the board to do, right? They said, hey, we would like, this would be smart for you guys to do. And it allows you to give that little bit of extra dollars coming in to help with the ever-changing increasing of cost. That doesn't mean we're still not going to be fiscally responsible. It doesn't mean that we're not going to still have reductions and being able to do the things that we need to do to. It doesn't mean that we're not going to still have reductions and being able to do the things that, that we need to do to keep our fund balance. But it does allow us to, to, to plan. I, I believe we're going to ask for a 10-year. That's another question that we decided to do last time. And I, and that's Michelle and I's recommendation again to you as we move forward is, is to do a 10-year vote. And like I said before, it's, it's obviously pretty important.
The inflationary factor is something.
Inflationary factor we put into it too, yeah.
That's something to consider.
And, and those are some of those things that aylers can help show you from a dollars and cents standpoint of what that would do, you know, to your taxes.
We do know at this point that if it fails, if we have a failed election, it will be a loss of revenue of $300,000 without a referendum in place.
Okay, you're going to get with aylers and then shoot us an email and let us know if that meeting is going to take place on July 22nd?
Yep. 8:00 AM.
AM, 8:00 AM, correct. Miscellaneous, item M, do, is there anything at this time? Do I have anything? Okay, move on to item N. At this time, we were going to close the session, this closed session meeting to discuss negotiating strategies. Do I have a motion to do this? Motion by Alicia. Do I have a second? I have a second by Donna to close this meeting at 8:51, 7:51, excuse me. 7:51 PM in order to discuss negotiation strategies.